The capacity select board meeting of Tuesday, October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four seven P M. We are in person at ninety one Sawyer Street, Oakwood Commons. It can also be viewed on Cohasset one four three T V. We're tuning on Facebook Live. Connect with us on the link is on the last page of the agenda. Um, we're going to do a call to order roll call. Mr. Flex.
There's Flex here.
Mr. Brady. Mr. Brady.
Uh, John.
Mr. Farad.
David Farad, present.
Ellen Mark, present. Okay, we're all here. Let's invite everyone to join us in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I would like a motion to move to the top of the agenda. Topic's not reasonably anticipated within forty eight hours. From the end of the agenda. Hot topic, no one intended to discuss. Do I have a motion? Right second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, I'd like a motion to move. Okay, so we're gonna talk about, um. Do we have Brian Joyce? Is he online yet?
He's on his strike. He's been driving here.
Oh, he's physically driving here.
He'll be here about five minutes.
Well, I'll talk about that. Okay.
I can start. He can join in.
Do you wanna give us? We're gonna talk about the fire R T M that happened yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yes, yesterday.
I'm glad Brad, Brad, for his entry. We had a damage to a major critical infrastructure yesterday. Uh, it appears that around five nineteen A M. A small fire of some sort began behind one of the sheds. Side of the building, first station. The first nine one one called at five forty A M. Exploded. That's by my shoulders, just investigating. What was damaged? Uh, three wooden buildings. Our metal storage building, we keep our loader. Nineteen two thousand twenty two loader, five hundred hours on. Uh, the entire building uh destroyed. Uh, some damage was uh suffered by the building with a compact. Uh, all of the power infrastructure in a fire. Two days period cameras. But he scaled. All of those totally gone. And many, many items which will, here with this would go along. That was in that building, things that we see. Yeah, around the site. So the initial response was was plasmat fire. What we relayed house that helped the second cloud. Vice Police, E P W. Facilities, first management, water department, I E. Action grid, building inspector. The recovery which got underway yesterday is that uh. Noticeable insurance, insurance carrier. We also have private insurance adjusters with us. Licensed site professional say determine potential uh. Evaluation, evaluate situation seen the site. We decided yesterday at a uh meeting that the R T F will be closed. Definitely think be sure it can happen yesterday. Hey, what we're gonna run into. Uh, today, uh, the wire inspector worked out a temporary power ration, actually grid. Which by me is gonna work out to. Uh, we, we have Brian Joyce's uh secret ask for a waiver. E P so we can uh dispose of recyclable material. The trash, it's in right there, just can't take that with the state. These are all steps we're taking, we proactive, so have our options, what we can do. Michelle has reached out and Brian Joyce to other communities to see if anybody can help with taking some of our residents on some case or something. Um, we have been uh working on how we could possibly run actual operation here. E P W is uh lots of ideas looking over the site to see what what happened. Um, the. Say we have to operate on passion basis somehow. Somehow for a period of time, we don't know, can't determine that just yet. The uh. Site will have to be cleaned up, that's a D E P requirement. Um, there's some additional testing and observations being done by. The uh site officials, D E P. The insurance company, insurance adjusters are on top. But that's to be done when uh the site has been secured, they're expensing on. So that the public does not come back, they keep them at least. Here where the damage was. So looking ahead. We need to know. Looking ahead, we need to understand that insurance settlement.
Cashers.
Yeah.
How you doing?
Good.
Looking at insurance settlement, which will cover uh whatever the policy. But it's likely that could be three of them. So, so we have to know that that's a long period of time. We have to uh. Incur costs to de-odd or do some mediation. So the other thing about that, the uh I T equipment is totally irreplaceable on that. That's, that's likely. To be a fifty, sixty thousand dollar expense just to get up and running on some of the things we rely on. Just your E P M is uh scale operations. Things like that. Um, the. You know, how exactly can we restore the fire and those kinds of things? This is a lot of side of the work that's done. The uh like the most factor in action today, so that's being looked at by I T. So just to solve that. And that'll be some of the deliberations that we have is which of those things can we live without on a temporary basis, if any, you know. Uh, certainly, we uh pretty happy that our security cameras. But, you know, the minute the fire got full, we'll uh stand the campus. So uh, the temporary operation is likely to be months because. Uh, even once we figure out what we have for insurance money or any sort of settlements. We have to then figure out what the requirements are, what we build. Certainly, in the current day, D E P requirements, uh, some of the things that we recycle, it's not put them in a shed again, I'll leave them. So, um, it's gonna be a long process to recover. Many, many, many months. Lots of experts, lots of um thought input going into it, because it may be. We, we determine this is an opportunity to change some of our practices and procedures, and maybe, maybe there is such a thing as state of the art, you know, transfer station. Might look at. So that might be an opportunity we have, you know, to upgrade our facility and maybe save the act. Some of the unfortunate things are, you know, our boy scouts are out business, uh, you know, collecting kids. It's like, you know, that causes that a little bit of cost. It certainly is an inconvenience for the residents. You know, that there's a. Lot of interest and people wanting to make certain that transfer facility is open all the time, and it's supposed to be, but it's not. So that's gonna be a long term aggravation, although folks will be used to the new, the new set of rules and circumstances. I would imagine it for sure is going to set aside some of our goals for cycling. Probably just not gonna be able to handle. The cycle operation we have. And so. So a lot of things that still have to be worked out, but I think, Brian, uh, the stuff happening on the street, um, thing. You're on the track and figure out a way to open some actually, or some way, or somehow. Open the next uh ten days, something like that. It's a very uh, very big. Problem. It's a very big loss of one of our critical infrastructures in town, very, very high in. Have to wait. Think through with all that is. Unfortunately, I hate to say this, I can talk first about the scarcity that uh. Some money is gonna have to be coming from somewhere. The cost, we were in a current, very costly, so. So, we need to think about that, whatever level. So that's my big point.
Yeah, thanks, Ryan. Uh, so we've been uh working with D E P uh since yesterday, on this fire happening this year. And we notified D E P in the late morning and we're working on a recovery solution, hopefully we'll be up one. Next Wednesday, as Brad said, it's some form of disposal of household trash. And I'm not sure exactly where you got into losses, but it was basically a loss of the garage, front end loader, and the office up there. Several shed buildings and. Cardboard, teak area, uh, damage to the cardboard and plastic. Beyond that, uh, unfortunately, it was a north wind, so everything towards the trash site glass uh didn't sustain fire. So we're looking at resuming operation in those areas as much as we can, and asking D E P for a waiver. To do uh disposal of the area, the items we can't take in from the site, household trash, dispose of those. So we're working through those, uh, I'll say, we've been discussing with Situ, they've offered help, assistance in any way. We need, we, you know, fair and long term closure that we said, it's that way we. I'll go through details of how that look, but that. Situ's reached out. And tomorrow, so right now, uh, the situation on the site is this perimeter fence around the fire damaged area. And tomorrow morning, the contractor will be on site to start. Jointly, this is disposal of everything, including the building. Spoiled, god, that. The machine, probably not six inches tops, so. D E P is outside as well. Will be L S B, unless it's a.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Brady.
Brian, there's a dude doing, thank you for what you're doing. Um, hang on. So you see, they're dumped all the time. I'm trying to stay there. Their dump's huge. I just remember a sister dump. Convene anybody that's a stick.
Yeah, so we're looking at both options. Uh, we had more discussion with Situ, but yeah, I think.
I was just saying, it's big. But that's the reason I was saying, I haven't been such a good job.
They're both a little bigger than us.
I, yeah, I didn't know situation.
And, and we all use, we use the blue uh pay as you throw uh trash bags, just. But I guess the details of. What we're gonna do will be fleshed out in the next two or three days. It'll be noticed out to the public. Right now, it's just we're closed until at least through Sunday, looking to open up in some form. Michelle was.
One of the examples. Why, why cash is needed is because we, as we have to throw away disposal, they're gonna be recycling. Trash disposal. So it's just gonna be a rule they built this company, we have to think about. You know, actually, you do be able to allow the response to recovery to go on.
And you don't know what the claim is gonna be, the insurance yet.
Sure.
So the, the adjuster. The adjuster will be on site tomorrow, um, and they have an estimator coming on site tomorrow as well, to see if they can give us an idea of what the total then. So if we could, if we could get that fleshed out, get fleshed out the operating cost to. To get you back up and running, then we can have, you know, more of a complete picture of what financial impact is gonna be. Mr. Brady.
Yeah, uh, by the way, thank both of you and your respective departments. This is why we, we have an effective town government to handle this and. And then not only you guys, the people below you, I mean, we are so fortunate to have this degree of expertise immediately. Um, I also note that it is so good to see that we are having a professional insurance adjuster. I mean, because if you don't, you get lost pretty badly by insurance company. I don't know who I say thank you, but I thank you for the whole, we'll make that possible. So thanks again.
Mr. Farad.
Thanks. Um, do we have any idea, what is the parameters on the policy for the total loss of the town building? Then do we have any beginning idea of that?
The umbrella is more than enough to cover the damage. At the same time, we're gonna get an in-kind response up to whatever code of crimes it might be. If we want to take it away. If this is snazzy branding, state of your facility, that insurance company. But the boss, so the master's role is that Michelle will make sure we have an adjuster on the side of the home. To go through these. That's a lot of these practices are not all, now we saw it through the bottom code, so. They actually lit up that our insurance, uh, perfectly, they take it over policy. We're actually talking to this very issue last week, so. We, we should know, I think, I think we put up a team in the field. Yeah, one getting in, uh, I don't know, I'm speaking with this counterpart. I spoke to my counterpart situation, we call it, it's a lot of assistance. Should be.
And I spoke my counterpart, the situation reached out to me as well.
I see.
Yeah.
From everyone that you've sent us to contact, does town council been contacted, so they can start to get, they should at least be on the C C regarding all, getting all the information. Um. Yeah.
I have a contract with town council as of yet. Uh, we don't have a whole lot of information to share with them. Um, until we have some of these things worked out. Um, as of today, we just signed an agreement with the L S P to share information with the D E P. Um, we, we have the adjuster um chosen, so I think as they start progressing. Getting legal, all be a good idea. Um, we just have anything to share with them, it's just too soon.
I, I would say it's a very, this should be notified and let the notes that start collecting. Information, because it comes down to a fight of the insurance company, such that all have wants to get. Get up to speed as soon as possible, and not just have a mountain of documents dumped on them at some time later. And, and right from the beginning.
Uh, so do you have any questions?
Uh, just when you mentioned that there was some I T infrastructure affected, was that local to the transfer station, or does it affect any other town function?
No. It's a, it's a. One of the things is that. Yeah, you don't understand. It all pays off. What are we gonna fix? What's the? Yeah, so it's all those pieces that make work. It's a major, major. Yeah, you came years ago. Oh, it's fixing.
Yeah, I just said one thing before I forget it. So, um, perhaps Tracy, next week, we should put this for another update, for meeting again a week from. Tonight, and of course, if anything, version comes through, Tom, the Lakers will share with us, but. Wednesday, I'm sorry, not Tuesday, next Wednesday, um. Did you tell him I'm coming back at the top of the meeting for, for a further update on Wednesday?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, Rob, here again, thank you, all the versions to the entry team, within the town site. I'm working this issue, but we, we missed before letting go, to also thank, or other two respondents, being at least the fire department. When this particular case kept the fire down, because it had spread into the woods, uh, they could have gone on to see the Ledge Village next door. And it could have been quite a catastrophic fire even more than what it was. So, again, thank you to the class of fire department for all that they did to keep it. To the area that it caused. And one of the other things, you know, you might argue that the garage, but, but, you know, involved four other fire departments to help us to do this, it's just. It's pretty. Whatever.
Very serious.
Yeah.
And one, one more.
Yeah, un- under the category of suppressing potential rumors. There's all these rumors around that Litin battery may not have exploded and. Before everybody goes crazy about various theories here and there, do you have any insights on what may have caused it, what it was, I don't think Litin battery, very well. So it's still an investigation, so.
I was gonna say, if, if this time the cause is unknown, it's still an investigation.
State file. Yeah, I just wanna save you guys from living in rumor head.
Kevin, are there any comments?
Uh, I don't agree.
Not right now? Okay. Um, anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? No? Well, thank, yes.
I just wanted to add one thing. So, I mean, it was a, it was a multi-fund response to the building, to the health. And one other effect, and so the power was cut off actually, so it became. It also can be solar. Power generation to grid. So that's out currently, so it's, it's a lot of ancillary expenses.
Thank you for that. Thank you guys so much. Okay, um, next is uh public comment. No public comment. Okay, we'll move on. Um, joint meeting with advisory. The advisory committee, school committee to discuss and vote on school special stabilization fund and road sidewalk stabilization fund. So, um, Mr. Chairman, you're, you have a forum, you want to call your meeting to order?
Sure, I'll be uh trying to school committee, advisory. To order by uh stating the role of the school committee. Better for Mr. Dial.
President, do you wanna go up there so we can hear you?
I, I didn't know where we could sit, so.
Oh.
I can just do this, it's fine.
Yeah, we're gonna have advisory on, on Zoom.
Alright, so I'll just call the October twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four uh joint meeting, the school committee, select order. By asking. About so, I'll put it according to dial. President, Slaski.
President.
And the current chair is present, giving us a form of free members.
Okay, great.
Along with the school committee members, uh, is our superintendent of schools, Sarah Sheen.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you for waiting, but it was important that we hear that update.
I don't even think chairs are mistakes, they're not in sight, so you can't hear voices, they're not known.
Yeah.
Okay, sure. Kevin, is advisory on? Oh, there's some events, okay. Okay. So all of advisory, um, is coming in on Zoom. Did we see them all, Kevin, pop up, or just, oh, I can't.
They're not on that screen.
Oh. On the big screen, okay. This is, um, Estino, do you have a quorum present?
Um, not quite yet. We need, I think, one more person. I did see, there's Mike, one, two, three, four, five. Actually, that is a quorum because we don't, we have nine members. Diane?
Yeah, I, I, I think Mark Maggi and Mark Cameron are both w- waiting to get on, to be let in.
Okay. So once they're here, we'll do our call to order. Thanks.
Sorry for the delay. I don't know if you were listening to the um update on the R T F.
Yeah, I, I heard the tail end of you calling for the forty eight hour exemption, so I knew it'd be a few minutes.
Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Okay, so we definitely have a quorum now, and I would like to call to order Cohasset Advisory Committee. Um, joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. Uh, it is seven twenty five. And could I have a roll call, please? Ben Thornton?
Ben Thornton here.
Mike Barclay.
Mike Barclay here.
Mary McGoldrick.
Mary McGoldrick here.
Diane Kennedy.
Diane Kennedy here.
Mark Maggi.
Mark Maggi here.
And Mark Cameron.
Mark Cameron, yeah.
Okay, so we are ready to go.
Good. Chris, do you want to, or some of the stabilization funds? Was it, was it three things we talked about?
Yeah, just three things.
Okay, so we're here tonight to talk about, um, three things regarding school special stabilization fund, road sidewalks stabilization fund. Um, for F Y twenty six, so we're. Everyone needs to vote on whether we're gonna continue the funds, we're gonna continue, continue the funds at the levels that they're at, or at a reduced amount. Um, or if we're going to increase the present levels by two and a half percent, which is what the um, the law allows on the tax levy. So, um. That, that's why we're here. So, um, I think, um, we know the success of both stabilization funds thus far. Um, in terms of the road paving project, all you have to do is drive upon street or, or South Main Street or Beechwood Street. Um, and we can see the benefits of that fund. Uh, we know the benefits of the school fund have been to, um, start the uh. Middle High School Fire Engineering Study, which. Uh, is coming before capital budget for special town meeting to do that project, um, as well as we titled the Deer Hill. School finished that kind of project last year. So I think that the funds have done what they intended to do, as well as for the schools, begin to build a reserve. For, um, what we're very happy to announce, the Osborne School Group was accepted into the M S B A program, so we will have the funding. Um, to help uh that project. So do any of my committee members have any comments or questions about the funds? Mr. Brady?
Yeah, thank you all for coming in, and for those people who are at home, stabilization funds of innovation. That we did, started a couple of years ago. It's wildly successful, and the purpose was so schools and other apartments, roads. Know that there's dedicated funding available, it's not at the whim of a. But with the different select word, town meeting, you know the money is there. So I think it's very good, and, and I really strongly support that when we go forward with this, that we increase it to statutory limit two and a half percent. And again, thank you very much, and the reason we can do that is you've earned it.
Anyone else? Now, any comments from, we'll address the school stabilization fund first. You guys have any comments about it? I'm addressing the school committee for those of you on Zoom.
And first, the manager, as I apologize for, um, being in person, I was in the impression that you wanted in person, um, it seems like it's just difficult, so.
Oh, no, it's fine.
That they have been. Appropriate for us here on Zoom, but.
Uh, we like to be right here.
Advisory, advisory meets on Zoom regularly, that, that's their format. I know school committee is like what we need.
Okay, alright, well, I just.
No apology.
Once, once here, it became kind of clear that maybe. Uh, so I apologize. Um, as far as the special purpose stabilization fund goes, uh, obviously, the schools. And the school are as much, just gonna be validating to that, question for that, because it's a. It's a fiscally responsible financial planning tool that will allow us to combat some of the deferred maintenance. Within the district and take care of our buildings, which are our largest public asset in town. Um, there is a lot of things, as you know, we've had this existing condition study completed by the I three architects. And find a number of things that were reaching in useful light. Um, we luckily, as you noted, have been accepted, our S O I has been accepted by the M S B A, and uh. Superintendent Shannon, I will be attending, um, their board meeting tomorrow, when it's officially. Um, voted to accept us, or we hope it's officially voted to accept us, and uh, so we'll get some subsidy for that project, which is great, it's a relief. However, there are the projects that were in the line, in line, um, including. However, there are the projects that were in the line, in line, um, including, um, you know, there's gonna be paving on both campuses, campus wide. The roads, sidewalks and. Line painting, it's all terrible. So we're gonna need to do that. That's a large cost. Boilers need to be replaced in every building. Um, the roof at Deer Hill School will need to be looked at. So there are a lot, a lot of projects, um, that we want to get to, that need to be addressed. So, um, the more that we have in that fund will allow us to do that most effectively. So. Uh, I invite and my colleagues to add to whatever I just offered.
That's the only thing I would add, just plan style, uh, vice chair at school committee. Uh, the only thing I would add is first appreciation for the ability to have this fund. Uh, I do think that without this fund, we'll find ourselves in a couple of years in two, three, four, five, financial straight respect for our school's need. Um, Chairman Colin outlined some of the, some of the main issues. I think when we looked at this, uh, during the process, we identified about seventeen, twenty million dollars worth of. Um, immediate improvements that are needed for our schools over the, over the period of time. So, uh, again, the, the needs for our schools haven't changed since the, uh, funds approved. So we definitely support, um, providing much funding for this as, as we can have. Schools can certainly, can certainly use it.
Mrs. Estino, any comments from your group?
Um, I would, I would ask for questions from anyone.
Mike Barclay?
Um, hi, good evening, everyone. Um, just first of all, great news on the Osgood Roof being accepted into the MSBA. Um, I was just curious, um, I understand there's also an application in for the middle high school is, and just curious. What the status of that is, you know, I think these stabilization funds are great and, you know, support increasing them the two and a half percent. But just curious if there's any update on the middle high school that goes beyond just kind of the Band-Aids that you all are talking about.
Provide, uh, an update. So just by way of background for individuals who are listening may not be familiar. There are two different paths with the MSBA. One is the accelerated, accelerated repair program and one is the core program. Um, the accelerated repair program, uh, is aptly named and, uh, it focuses on, uh, repairs, existing assets, um. And large scale repairs and, uh, so the Joseph Osborn Good School roof was accepted into the accelerated repair program. So that was a separate SOI submitted, uh, to a different program. The, uh, middle high school SOI is submitted to the core program, which is served for, uh, major renovation or replacement projects. Uh, to public school buildings throughout Commonwealth and, um, there are a number of applicants over here. Funds, obviously, we have applied, uh, this will be our third application. And, um, we will find out in about, um, maybe a month and two weeks whether we're accepted into that program. Um, right now, on a simultaneously, simultaneous or concurrent to the parallel pathway. Is the feasibility study that we requested funds for and obtained through special town meeting, uh, cycle. Um, that feasibility study is ongoing. We're in the fishing process right now with, um, AI three architects. And, um, and so we're optimistic that if we're not accepted into the core program for that middle high school. Um, large scale renovation or placement project this year. That the feasibility study that our town dedicated funds to will make our application extremely competitive for the next application cycle. We also, as I think everyone is aware, hired a new superintendent recently and, um, Superintendent Shannon has a lot of experience applying. Uh, successfully to these programs. So that will also add, I think, a competitive edge to our application. So, um, that's a long way of saying that that process is still going on, on a parallel track. And, uh, you know, we're doing, so we're doing our independent feasibility study and applying to the core program simultaneously. Uh, we'll give an update once we find out whether we're accepted this year. And if not, we will plan to reapply with a even more robust, uh, SOI for two thousand twenty-five.
Mrs. Estino?
I'm just curious, typically, uh, the Mass School Building Authority, um, grants these funds in a percentage of the cost. Do we have any idea what the, what the criteria is for this, for the program, for the, sorry, for the Osgood School?
I do not, sitting here right now. I think we're gonna get more of that information once it's officially, um, accepted tomorrow. Um, hopefully, and, um, I think you're not the only one, Mrs. Estino, who has asked that question. And, uh, I don't believe that, um. So I'm just looking back at our superintendent who is, um, shaking her head that we still don't have more information on that. So we, uh, are happy to share that with you as it becomes available to us.
Great, thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Any other questions? No, I guess we're good.
Okay, so, uh, I will ask the select board for a motion to approve the continuation of the, uh, school stabilization fund.
So I'm.
Mr. Brady, second? Yes, sir. Yes.
So this motion would be for the continuation and, and so that would be a separate motion.
Separate motion.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, there will be three votes. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to continue the special, the, um, school stabilization fund. We have a second, um, all in favor on the select board?
Aye.
Aye. That's fine. Aaron, Mr. McCullen, you want to make your motion?
Sure, I make the motion to the same, right, excuse me, ask for a motion to the same. So move, motion can be by Mr. Dial, second by Mr. Leskey, all in favor, aye, aye, opposed, motion passes by all three members.
Okay, and Mrs. Estino?
Um, do I have a motion to approve continuation of the school specialization funds?
So move.
Whoop. Okay, who wants to move it and who wants to second it?
Ladies first, I'll second it.
Okay, so was it Mary?
Yes.
And Mike? Okay, and then, um, so I'll take, I'll do two. The two motions for these two items separately. Um, so roll call, please. Uh, Mike Barclay?
Mike Barclay, aye.
Vince Thornton?
Vince Thornton, aye.
Diane Kennedy?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Mary McGoldrick?
Mary McGoldrick, aye.
Mark Maggi?
Mark Maggi, aye.
And Mark Cameron?
Mark Cameron, aye.
And Gina Estino, aye. So we are.
All in favor.
All in favor. Sorry, none of us are good.
So the next motion, uh, for the schools, I just conferred with town manager, but of two more motions, will make it one motion. I'd like a motion from the select board to, um, sustain the one point five million dollar fund balance with the allowable increase of two and a half percent. So moved by Mr. Brady, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it's a million five plus two and a half percent. Street, Tom?
May I ask for a motion from the committee, same fact. Being made by Mr. Leskey, second by.
Second.
Style, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All.
Thank you. And Mrs. Estino, did you hear our motion? So you can just replicate it?
I did not. The sound is not great.
Okay, so we made a motion to sustain the, um, to maintain the million and a half dollar fund allocation with two and a half percent. As allowable by law.
Okay, so. To take the place of the motion that I made already for the schools or is this for the, the roads?
This is for, this is the set part two for the schools. Okay, so our first vote was to keep the fund. Our second vote is to maintain the balance and add two and a half percent.
Okay, so would someone make that motion, please?
So moved.
Second, Diane.
And who made the motion, please?
Mark Cameron.
Okay, um, okay, roll call, please. Uh, Mike Barclay?
Mike Barclay, aye.
Vince Thornton?
Vince Thornton, aye.
Diane Kennedy?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Mary McGoldrick?
Mary McGoldrick, aye.
Mark Cameron?
Mark Cameron, aye.
Mark Maggi?
Mark Maggi, aye.
And Gina Estino, aye.
Thank you. So that concludes our school stabilization fund. So if you'd like to close your meeting, unless you want to stake the roads and sidewalks.
Um, I do not, but. But, uh, before we do adjourn, I think just on behalf of the school district and school family, we'd like to thank all these select board and advisory boards supporting us in this. Uh, we do think that they will, uh, promote the best possible maintenance programming for our largest public assets. Of course, one of our most important public assets, education of our youngest generations. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved, this will be. So it's been made by Mr. Dial, second by Mr. Leskey, all in favor, aye, all opposed. Motion carries by.
Thank you so much for coming. Superintendent Shannon, thank you for coming. Thank you for your support.
And I'll know you both to come every other Tuesday.
Thank you. Next up is our roads and sidewalk fund, Mr. Joyce. Brian, do you want to come up?
Sure.
So again, the procedure is the same. It's, um, the first vote is to affirm the continuation of the stabilization fund for roads and sidewalks. For FY twenty-six, and then the second motion will be either to maintain it, increase it, decrease it, and add two and a half percent, we so choose. Well, it's gonna be two motions like we just did. We just did two. Um, anything you want to say about the utilization of the fund?
So, uh, this was very helpful this year. Uh, we were able to do the entirety of South Main Street, well, the entirety, but from the same, I mean, situation. This one here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been, uh, super helpful, uh, this year. We've, uh, coordinated what roads we, uh, we did with the sidewalk and roads committee. Uh, Paul Brady, the member of, uh, other residents. Um, so we did South Main Street, Pond Street, Beechwood Street, Mill Lane, and, uh, we have several other roads in queue for this coming year. Um, including designs for Pond Street sidewalk, uh, from three A King Street, paving that road along with. A list that is beyond the bound. So we're gonna have to repair now what we can do with the money, but it's, it's definitely needed and I think I hope everyone knows the difference.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's one of the most visible, you, you know, things the citizens can see other than the Beechwood Playground, which is quite colorful. Um, so I, I'm gonna ask a question that, that. Nobody shoot me. If you had more money, how much more money would you want? And don't say like five million, but you're at eight hundred.
That's actually the, the way it came into my mind. If I'm not involved.
But. But, but, you know, understanding that we can't do every road because then every ten years we'd have to have the same amount of money, you know, as you know, it's all programmed out, but.
I think, uh, I think. You know, we share our consortium contract. We, we pool our, our tonnage of asphalt with the local communities and that way we get better buyback of the D O T. So we have a limited construction timeframe, you know, from May until November, say. And we share that contractor with other communities. So I think the, you know, the amount that we have, which is just around a million. Uh, you know, plus or minus what we give for checking our D. That, that seems to be a good amount that we can spend each year and we can, you know, make an impact to our roots. And then you also need to factor it, we have utility work in several areas on roads that need to be paved. So we need to queue up that utility work ahead of, you know, ahead of the roof paving by a year. So I, I think, I think this, the value of this plus the two and a half percent seems to be a good figure.
Okay. You have your chance. Uh, no, I, I think, I think it's a good figure and, um, but I think as we look into FY twenty-seven and then we're here a year from now. Approving that and if, if utility work is more mapped out and you might say, well, I need more or. If we make it less, then we can never make it more. We can always make it more. Do you follow?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
So when I was, we really did any more, I'll be ready to come up.
Yeah, I will say, you know, so the town, uh, the town benefited from the Little Harbor project, which paved the great majority of the roads on the coast around there. And, you know, we're trying to get a twenty-year lifecycle. We're coming up to that twenty-year lifecycle. So a lot of these roads that paved new. They're, they're all gonna be in the same shape, need to be done, you know, next, say, five, five to ten years. So there will be a point where, you know, we want to do more, uh, in certain years than we. Say about two, six.
And isn't there a, a point in time when the wear and tear gets into the underlayment, which dramatically increases costs? So, so I personally would be in favor of making sure we never get to that point, even if this requires additional appropriations.
Yeah, that's a good point, sir. You don't want to let it fall apart so you lose some base here. You want to be in a mill and overlay system pretty much continuously, save that some days.
Okay, um, any questions from the advisory committee before I do the first motion?
Questions, comments? I don't think so. I think we're good.
So I will ask the select board, um, I'll ask for a motion to approve, um, the road and sidewalk stabilization fund for FY twenty-six.
Mr. Brady should make that motion because he was, did so much work on it.
He, he, he just did.
Thank you, Jack.
In a second, please?
Okay.
Mr. Pluck, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um.
You ready? Or you want to do this, do the second one?
You want me to do the se- our second one? Go.
For the two and a half percent, are you gonna do that?
Okay, so we'll do that now. So can I have a motion to approve the funding level of stabilization fund at the present eight hundred thousand dollars plus two and a half percent?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Pluck's, select board all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so two motions, Mrs. Estino?
Okay, could I have a motion to continue the road stabilization fund into fiscal year twenty-six at the current level?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, who did the second, please?
Mark Maggi.
Thank you. All right, so we need a roll call, please. Mike Barclay?
Mike Barclay, aye.
Vince Thornton?
Vince Thornton, aye.
Diane Kennedy?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Mary McGoldrick?
Mary McGoldrick, aye.
Mark Maggi?
Mark Maggi, aye.
Mark Cameron?
Mark Cameron, aye.
And Gina Estino, aye. And could I have a motion to maintain the road special sta- stabilization fund at the current rate of eight hundred thousand dollars? And add two and a half percent as allowed by law?
So moved.
Second, Diane or Mary?
Diane gets it.
Number two.
Okay, all right, uh, roll call, please. Mike Barclay?
Mike Barclay, aye.
Vince Thornton?
Thornton, aye.
Diane Kennedy?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Mary McGoldrick?
Mary McGoldrick, aye.
Mark Maggi?
Mark Maggi, aye.
Mark Cameron?
Mark Cameron, aye.
And Gina Estino, I'm an I.
Great, thank you. Um, Mrs. Estino, I don't know if you need to adjourn your meeting or go to another Zoom link for your advisory meeting?
We do, we do. So do I have a motion to adjourn this, the first part of our evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All right, roll call. Mike Barclay?
Mike Barclay, aye.
Vince Thornton?
Vince Thornton, aye.
Diane Kennedy?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Mary McGoldrick?
Mary McGoldrick, aye.
Mark Maggi?
Maggi, aye.
And Mark Cameron?
Mark Cameron, aye.
Gina Estino, aye. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank all of your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we log out of this one and log into the next one, folks.
So, um, next up on our agenda, permits and events, the, um, Chamber of Commerce Holiday Scroll for December fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Um. This is, um, a, a repeat event. It's been going on for twenty years, five to eight P M downtown in the Village. Kevin, is anyone here from the Chamber of Commerce or Chief Quigley?
Chief Quigley.
Okay.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. Sorry, we're a bit delayed. Um, so we're just talking about the, the holiday stroll downtown. It's been going on for, what are the applications, say, twenty years?
Uh, it's, it's been a while. Um, it's been a minute. Uh, yeah, so this is a recurring event. This one's going to take place. The proposed date is um, December fourteenth. Um, I've gone back with, back and forth with email with, um, Sean Cunningham. And, uh, it's the standard traffic plan, um, in the, our, uh, you know, we, we have not, there's nothing really to change. I'd ask that the, um, board support this this year. Um, with the condition of, you know, we're, we're fine tuning the traffic plan and I just want to, uh, uh, be face to face with Sean before we, you know, and, and give it final approval in the days right before the event. And they're also gonna need a, um, entertainment license as well. So it's, it's gonna be a two separate, one permit for the event itself. In one, with, with the caveat, the, with final approval, approval from Public Safety. And, um, the second is a, uh, one day entertainment license.
Is that for all the street musicians and jugglers and acrobats and?
Correct. Um, the, the, they, they put up a stage and, you know, there's some live music, so.
Okay.
Also the tree lighting.
Okay, thank you. So we have two motions here. So the first one, um, can I have a motion to approve the Chamber of Commerce Holiday Stroll on December fourteenth? Okay, select board all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve the entertainment license for the Chamber of Commerce Holiday Stroll for Saturday, Saturday, December fourteenth?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting.
Thanks.
Okay, next up is licensing. So we're gonna open a public hearing. Excuse me, I need to read this. Um, public hearing notice. Class select board acting as the liquor licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, seven ten P M at ninety-one Sawyer Street, local comments, who has mass to consider the application of who has Harvard Restaurant LLC. Renew annual on-premise, uh, check to twelve, all alcohol annual license and common virtual, virtual license. Close manager is Jonathan with our Mendez. The licensed premises are located at forty-six Border Street, who has mass. The applicant is proposing a restaurant approximately six thousand sixty-one square feet consisting of an interior first floor restaurant bar, exterior patio deck seating in an adjacent area. First ground floor includes an interior kitchen, bathrooms, a dining area and a bar and an exterior patio deck area. The premise also includes the right of use, the covered war for dining seasonally. Approximate square footage is two thousand eight hundred sixteen square feet for the restaurant and bar. One thousand four hundred ninety-four square feet for the kitchen and one thousand four hundred twenty-two square feet for the covered war. Public is invited to offer input on the proposed writing in advance of the public hearing by emailing the select board comments and who has M H on board or person at this hearing. Public can also attend via the Zoom platform. Details for access, um, on our select board agenda. The agenda is available online in the meetings here in notices of calendar section. Um, so our public hearing notice is now open. Um, now subsequent to that, we received correspondence from a Mr. William, Attorney William R. Eddy's requesting a continuance of this license of this public hearing, I'm sorry, uh, for who has Harvard Restaurant. Until January seventh, twenty twenty-five. So may I have a motion to continue this public hearing until January seventh, twenty twenty-five? That's second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that was pretty easy. So, um, I'd like us to discuss, uh, to petition the state, uh, for an additional, for additional all alcohol on-premise licenses. And there's information in your packet from Attorney Lambke, um, and I just, for myself, because I'm a visual person, um, I just put these together. Yeah, it's, it's, it's only a single page. It's just a single page. So, um, so we have presently fourteen all alcohol on-premise licenses. Thirteen, um, have been approved by the A B C C. The ten, the fourteenth, we allocated uh, one or two meetings ago. I, I forget which one, Bistro, which has yet to be approved by the A B C C. We have five wine and malt on-premise licenses. Uh, so we have two remaining. We have one, um, and the end folder, all alcohol on-premise, that's part of the fourteen, as are the three clubs. Um, so in look, in looking at this and understanding the redevelopment of the harbor area and looking at where a lot of these licensors are held, um, and one might be coming at us. Um, I think it's time for us to consider petitioning the state, um, for additional liquor licenses, all alcohol on-premise licenses. We, we don't need more wine and malt because we still have two that are open and, and unasked for. It's a note that three of our licenses are, uh, member club. Licenses for the American Legion, the Ball Club and the Rock Club, which we approved last year. Um, two of which are in the harbor area and are, um, other than the old Salt House are the only, there's only three in the harbor area. And the harbor area is undergoing some, some development. Um, I looked at our population increase. Um, we picked up a thousand people since two thousand and ten. Our population per square foot has increased by eleven percent. We're becoming a more dense population in town. I think the village revitalization, um, has been positive. Um, and one of the reasons, uh, reading through Attorney Lambke's suggestion is for economic development. We certainly think having more licenses um, which, um, would justify that, um, development. Mr. Gray? I'm all set.
I don't think there's any discussion. You said you sell now and share. In the last short period of time, we probably thought. Those, um, towns can be revitalized. We got Beechwood on the, on the go. Store coming in, um, and I think we should have something in our back pocket anyway. Being in Harvard. So I just think it's kind of a no brainer that we fill up the times and keep, keep windcoast acid and keep this spot. We have to ask for these five licenses.
Mr. Gray?
Uh, I think that we need to revisit this in general. And I don't disagree that we probably could use more licenses to, to properly serve our residents. You know, however, in this matter, like in all matters, I think we ought to have, um, you know, one or two public hearings so the public is aware of this, has a chance to weigh in. They're just playing good public policy and going to our constituents. And I would be in favor of having probably two well-publicized open meetings to discuss this before we would, went further.
Well, the, um, the process is, you know, according to Mr. Lianke, is that this will go to special town meeting. It will become an article on warrant. And there's not a more public hearing than special town meeting. Um, just so we can get a sense of the community and then, uh, that's why this is kind of urgent tonight. If we want to proceed, otherwise we have to wait six months and, and we don't know what kind of development and progress will be made on some of the harbor projects. Um, we can certainly have um, public hearings after special town meeting to get some further insight if, if it, if it approved at, at special town meeting.
And how much time do we have? First thing, before special town meeting, how many weeks? It's December ninth. Okay, so we, I, well, I think we should probably try to have some public meetings before that. Before that. So we don't have people going in and I'm not sure the town meeting is necessarily informational. In a forum and obviously there's any problem where we can schedule, you know, two or at least one meeting so people can come in and ask questions rather than spending all that time in town meeting. Questions that probably can be very easily answered. And I'm in support of this. I, but I'm, I'm also in support of, um, going to our citizens and letting them know as much as possible ahead of time. It would be nice if we could have put this forward earlier, but that's who's crying over spilled milk. But I think we should have at least one, if not two, before special.
What's the advice?
Uh, I agree, Mr. Grady and Mr. Creighton, uh, although I think logistically it could be challenging. Uh, anything to get input on this issue in particular because I I admit I don't always understand why, but alcohol can be a sensitive issue for folks, so it's important for them to chime in. The other thing I would offer is that, um, if we have a hearing prior to town meeting, then we've got a town meeting. We still have the opportunity for public input, but we award any of these licenses. So, uh, we could, uh, overdo the opportunities for public input or awarding any of these licenses. But that said, I don't think we should slow down getting this onto the board and hopefully getting initial licenses.
We can just have an informational thing very briefly for an hour, an hour and a half. Um, just so people feel that they were given the opportunity. I don't think this is kind of political. But again, letting people know that we gave them the opportunity beforehand, I think it's just the public policy.
Mr. Gray?
I don't disagree with, uh, Jack. I all like more. The licenses, if we're worth them, are gonna sit. Stack. So again, I'm not a first, that'd be some four-time meeting, running along the lines, get me wrong. But the licenses do sit in, so it was per you. We don't have to warn them. To these people, and the restaurant opens, if they have a dark center room, we feel, or as a whole, feels that it's, uh, by the project. So I don't think that we should sit there and wait to not submit the applications. No, I, I, I agree with it. I think we should, this board, I would say that we probably, uh, rest your town manager to find a town, uh, a, a time and let the public know that there'd be an informational session. You don't have, there's just less work needed. Just an informational session.
Which is fine, um, yes, it's a for.
Finished it, though.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm happy to participate in any public hearing. Um, it doesn't, we don't get the licenses upon approval at special time meeting. If the application has to go to the state, it does take some time. So we do, we, we just continued a hearing for our license that we don't have open until January seventh. It's highly unlikely, in my opinion, I could be wrong, that we will have approval from the state by January seventh for this application. It, it's, it's a, it's a process that takes a few months, from what I understand.
So I think it could take longer than that. So the timing was good, uh, because the new legislative session begins in January. With a new legislature, it's a two-year cycle. So getting in early allows us to have a maximum amount of, of conversation. Marshfield has been seeking licenses for three years. Uh, so the sooner you get them to queue faster, I don't know how often they've gotten. The class has, according to research, it traces today, we have, we haven't sought or received any additional licenses uh, for on-premises before. Uh, and as the chairs point out, the population's around, class has quite a vibrant restaurant. People's walk the village on Thursday, Friday. There's actually lines, people wait, which is good. It's a good vibrant, uh, environment and the whole post amendment reality is that what people are intent, uh, which is good. So I, people like to eat out and it, it really makes a nice, nice environment too. That said, from a time perspective, we can both, if the word goes side to our warrant through, we most certainly have an informational session. They always have a public informational session on one, four, three, D, P, or we can most certainly schedule a session in November to go over this and any other articles that we're talking about. In advance of town meeting, the more the people know, the more certain.
Thank you. Uh, when it comes, as you mentioned, with economic development, if you look at Derby Street, for instance, one of the great secrets of that development is that the anchor of Derby Street, as you might think, is the big box stores like Kohl's or something. But it's not. It's the restaurants. The restaurants are the anchors that actually bring, uh, the people in and then they build around that. Now, I'm not saying we're gonna have a Derby Street here in Cohasset, but I'm just giving the example about how valuable restaurants are to economic development. Uh, and, and with, uh, getting some more licenses, I think we should get at least the ball moving on it. I would also ask that we also get some input from the Chamber of Commerce regarding it. See what they, they think as well. And I think it would help create more licenses, help create more vibrant in some of the places that they're, we're looking to have. And for most restaurants that are opening, unless they're a lunchtime restaurant, um, a liquor license is, is needed to have a viable restaurant. You, you're simply not gonna have a nighttime restaurant without a liquor license. So, um, that would be in favor moving along and then along the way, whatever hearings or public information sessions at the board, the live then would be fine. But I, I wouldn't want to delay it.
Thank you.
You can't vote on it tonight.
Yes, we can vote to put it on the warrant.
Doesn't say on the, they vote. No, there's no vote called for. So why don't we schedule to have the vote, come to town? Have a public hearing sometime prior to that.
Well, we can't. The warrant closes next Wednesday and we have a meeting next Wednesday. Um, Mr. Senior, do you know, can I amend the agenda? I actually will go.
Yeah, all you're doing would be breaking all the records. So I don't think that's a lot of seven years time council, but it, it doesn't seem to be a substantive issue.
If, if we did vote on it tonight and then we subsequently found out that that was somehow inappropriate, could we vote again Wednesday next week?
Well, you, when you start the vote to finalize the warrant next weekend.
Well, that's my question.
So, so by that.
So we could do it.
Yeah, you could do it tonight, which will accelerate.
So why don't we vote against denying a hearing, public hearing?
Okay. Yes.
I would make a motion to petition, petition the state for additional all alcohol on-premise restaurant licenses.
Yes, I believe we have to stay, um.
At least five additional licenses.
So Mr. Gray, he's made a motion. Do we have a second?
Just figuring, you're doing to add, adding an, adding an arm.
Second.
Pluck seconded. I'm gonna, I, I have to have a roll call. Does anyone object to that?
No.
No. Okay, Mr. Pluck?
Chris Pluck's aye.
Eddie, aye.
Jack, great, not.
David Farag, aye.
Okay, so Chris, we'll work on the language from Mr. Lianke's memo for the warrant and then we'll vote the final warrant language next week. Thank you, everybody.
First, we can get the ball started, right? Discuss the ball start.
And now, I, I heard.
By the bow rolling, by the ball rolling.
You agree to it.
I, I most certainly will. It, I most certainly will. I'd be happy to. I think, um,
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think that, you know, actually having a public forum on, on the warrant in and of itself is, is a good idea. A topic for conversation. Um, I will reach out, Mr. Farag to the Chamber of Commerce to let them know, um, what we're doing and see if they have any input on it. I think that's a good idea as well. Okay, so now on to special town meeting warrant review, um, and this does say vote, so there are some, um, items we can vote on at this point in time. We've been through all of them except for the last item. In addition to the zoning. Um, zoning article. Chris, you want me to go through it? Do you want me to go through it?
It's up to you.
Okay, I'll go through it. So Amendment one, amendments to fiscal twenty twenty-five operating budget. Um, as explained to us at the last meeting, this is just the annual transfer of funds from pig access and cable related funds for Cohasset. Uh, one, four, three, for sixty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-six cents. Advisory voted to approve it by eight to nothing. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's five zero.
Can we vote, if if assuming every board member has gone over these, can we vote these on bond?
I do.
On bulk?
On bulk.
Send back the N B A.
Does it mean the same thing?
I don't feel like you put French in a phrase, that's.
Well, you can do some of them, there is some conversation about, um. Article six capital improvement that we should discuss, um, so we can.
Helen, I also have a question on.
Okay.
Whenever people get time.
Okay, so, um. How about, I will entertain a motion to approve Article two unpaid bills from previous fiscal years, which at the moment.
So I I would hold that until next week.
We hold it till next week.
There's nothing yet, I just want to make sure it's not.
Okay, Article three is a vote to approve the, um. Free cash transfers to the OPEC trust fund of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Article four is allocation of funds for one time costs. Um, well, it's been approved by advisory, um. And Article five, does that leave a conversation, Chris? To be safe, okay. Does anyone have any questions on Article five? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve Article two, Article three, Article four? And Article five as presented in the draft warrant. Remember second? Second, uh, Mr. Flex, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Article six capital improvement projects, um, so. There's two sources of funds here from different funds capital requested. Um, and as you can see, Tracy did a great job reformatting all of these expenditure boxes so that they're consistent. With the source of funds, the department, et cetera, um. So in the enterprise fund. Um, the only article, the only project that capital voted on last night. Was project number four, school special, from the school's special stabilization fund that had been designed for the Oscar group repairs and replacement. Which we heard earlier was funded by, um, and has been approved by the M S B A accelerated repair program. Um. Project number five, they did not vote on, um, this is the fire alarm system for Cohasset middle and high school. Um, I actually think, Shell's not here, I think it's one point four three million dollars. Uh, last year, if you remember, we appropriated a hundred fifty thousand dollars to do the the study for the, um. Middle high school fire alarm system, which needs to be replaced in its entirety, it needs to be brought up to code. Um, Nick Marari made a presentation, capital budget last week. Um, but capital is not voted on that, so we can vote on number four. Um, I think Chris Capital was waiting for the fund balance in the water enterprise fund to make sure that. These appropriations were covered.
There is suspicion, there are suspicion.
Okay, do we typically vote, capital hasn't voted?
You have, remember, you have one more meeting, so I think you're okay.
Okay.
If you not hold on Article six.
Okay.
Get on me. I think they're meeting Monday.
They're meeting Monday again. Yep, um, out of the general fund, the project number one, um, the security operates for, uh, the police department, that's a replacement of. Patrol rifles that are have. I don't know, been with many years or something, uh, for a very long time. Um, that was approved, um, the amount of seventeen thousand dollars, not twenty four thousand dollars. Is what, um, Shell told capital last night, and then the airlifting bags. Are not out of capital.
Oh, remember those, you remember those lockdown costs?
Okay, but they're actually not in our copy of the law, so that's my. Okay. Okay, so. So does everyone understand that in general fund, item number two, the airlifting bags, the fire department. For nine thousand nine hundred thirty eight dollars, because now coming out free cash, not out of capital stabilization. And will, it will add to Article four, so there will be six projects under that, just approved Article four. We need an amendment or do you want to wait until next week?
You know, I I was like, I was like, the one with the six, I was on the.
Oh, yeah, I. I didn't.
Remember, I say questions.
Yeah, we are, we already moved it. Okay. So we're getting, we need to wait for capital on Monday night to, um. Vote on Article six. Article seven. Members to social vocational technical regional high school. Is this relative to the addition of Marshall to that?
Yes, what Superintendent Nikki explained, uh, when he came.
Okay. Okay, so, um. So, so Article seven is. Well, based on the presentation we had from Superintendent Nikki from South Shore Botec, a few weeks back, Article eight is the creation of. Revolving fund for rental inspections and other programs that, um, was started this fall. And then Chris, you wanted Article nine to talk about, so can I have a motion to approve Article seven, Article eight as soon?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Article nine, um, so Mr. Callahan, do you wanna come up? If you have some questions?
I almost had a minute, I missed.
Okay. So on, Article nine, Mr. Flex, you have questions?
You don't wanna miss a single.
So, Helen, uh, part of this, I expect, is well before my time on the select boards, but as I was. I, one of the things that, uh, seemed odd to me. Was that it does set a height limit for wind turbines, and the height limit is a hundred meters. Which sounds taller than any Cohasset resident would want. Anywhere near anything in Cohasset. So my question is, uh, whether that's something that we are already bound to in legislation in Massachusetts, like the Green Communities Act. Or if that's something over which we would have some discretion. Again, just trying to think of, um, what would be appropriate. In Cohasset, a hundred meter tall windmill doesn't seem like it.
Yeah, it's a lot.
It's a lot, it's a lot of windmill.
Yes. We are, the purpose of this exercise or this article is to use a housekeeping. And it is not to rewrite the substance of what all would existed. Got a question the other night about, and because of the. Small changes to the floodlight thing, or there's something in there about an eighteen foot long plank. We weren't addressing these sections of what we wanted. That would be something to take up with the. Spanish energy team, it's their predecessor community that works there. Trying to clean up. It's really. Um, and we weren't there, and this wasn't an exercise in. We're looking at.
Yeah.
And and and, all right, so the bylaw has been there, and whatever windmill we have. It's subject to a lot size requirement, it's subject to a set.
And it's, and that's helpful, um. That has been there for a long time, probably predating my residence in Cohasset, I accept. It's just, as I'm sitting here being asked to vote in favor or oppose it. Something that says it's okay to build a hundred meter tall wind turbine in Cohasset. Doesn't seem consistent.
Good point, the bylaw only regulates large scale turbines, it generally. That's what these, those things are, they're big and tall. Our future demands having alternative energy sources.
But are we, are we under an obligation through the Green Communities Act or some other? And that's the kind of thing that would. We gave my injection, but if this is something that we have the freedom as. Cohasset residents to design in a way that we think is appropriate for Cohasset, I wouldn't wanna design it with a hundred meter tall wind.
We won't have any large scale turbines in Cohasset in those days of snow ages.
I would argue that not having windmills does not relevant in Cohasset.
We have differences in opinion.
If we don't have windmills today.
The focus of this, the focus of this change is not on the substance of what the bylaw says for fifteen years, it's to housekeeping teams, to make it simply read. Simply work with, and to make things that change the technology easier to work in, that's it. You'd like to, we study it after I'm done with this, be my guest.
I I don't.
I'm sorry, this is short, but I I just.
Mr. Callahan, please. Let Mr. Plax finish what his comments are, before you interrupt. Anderson, why you been going through it, please?
You made very good points, uh, I think it's. Important for us to understand whether or not this is something that we as Cohasset can design, or something that we are under some obligation. From the state to do a certain way, if we have freedom to design. The way we would like. Then I would suggest that we change the maximum height of the wind turbines to something much smaller than a hundred meters.
Mr. Gray.
Then you won't, you won't have, you won't have the turbines that these, this bylaw regulates, but bylaw regulates a certain harsh term.
Okay, Mr. Gray.
Time, I believe. Um, I've been on a bunch of these predecessor community and much of the meetings of this, and it ended the. Uh, if we are making cleaning up, I think that Mr. Plax has a very good point. One of the things that when you clean up something, if you're looking at something that's no longer appropriate. Um, and whatever how this ended up there in there originally, it clearly, I think, is not, um. Consistent with what anybody in this town would would want, in absence some, you know, compelling, um. Requirement from the state, I think the idea that the recognition that a hundred meters is. Much higher than this, anybody in this town would would really want, if warranted, so I think we have to figure out. Uh, a very simple thing to, um, not happen. So I think, Chris, that's a good point, thank you, you know, it's the purpose of all this review.
All I'm saying, if you don't want large turbines in town, then 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 there'll be. Section of the bylaw will be, that's the solution. This is a height generated by the. Height of generation required in five hundred kilometer.
I don't think a hundred meters is an appropriate height. For a town like Cohasset.
Then you're saying no windmills in Cohasset, that's fine.
I think what. When we decided we needed to review this and clean it up, part of the things we're looking to clean up is things that have been passed. In the past, which were no longer appropriate, or upon closer examination, we felt should be updated. And I, I really think. We owe Mr. Plax a gratitude for. For pointing this, pointing this out, I don't think that if we ask the community at large if they want a hundred foot windmill. About a meter, that they would be in favor.
So I would just like to clarify in all the presentations that I've heard on this. The stated intent is to clean up the article and make it, um. In keeping with with the state bylaw, not for review of of content.
Just to make it shorter and. Over written period of the regulations to. Trying to look up the green communities.
Okay, so. Why don't we move on then from?
Sorry. Yes, it's coming up at the eleventh hour. I haven't heard one objection of living in this town in thirty plus years to. I'll see the wind turbines from existence.
I think.
Do you have someone there, Helen? Yeah, the Rose Hill neighborhood.
That's kind of affected the view of the beach.
Shortly after I moved in, there was a robust discussion. It does come up, and I think it's appropriate to get ahead of it.
Then I would suggest either. To reading the article or speak to the Muslim community and have them look into what they hear.
I know that they look into what obviously any beaches want.
Okay, so I have a suggestion. Why don't, okay, we can. Do as Mr. Callahan suggested and seek with A D C about this particular, um, provision and the the bylaw. Um, and you get that information by next Tuesday, or we defer for vote on Sunday before.
We'll be striking.
We could.
I think that's probably the simplest way, because I'm quite sure that not pass.
Would we be striking the amendments?
Would be striking all the amendments, so.
I'll just add a. Sandwich in a ball.
So if you, if you look through the amendment, everything that's underlined or has a strike through is a change to our original bylaw. And so, I'm sorry?
Yes, it's a change to the current bylaw.
It's a change to the current bylaw, so there's substantial. Change, and that is what we have been asked to weigh in on, and now we are. Commenting on, um, number, well, number three is a strike through, it's now number. C. Height. That paragraph which remains, that provision remains unchanged. Okay, Shell, tower height, you see three hundred fifty feet or a hundred meters to the highest point reached by the, they sell, so that's, that's the. I am reading edge, um. Mr. Plax, that's moving it right place.
Sorry, I was starting to agree.
Okay, so, yeah, so it's under, um, strikers, number three, dimensional requirements, all wind turbine shall comply with. Requirements set forth as follows. And so. Oh. Maybe I don't have the current one.
So maximum tower at three hundred sixty feet, eighty meters. That show compliance right here. See now.
Yeah.
Two hundred sixty feet. Eighty meters.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good.
Don't you break record.
It's eighty meters has, it's eighty meters and special term can move.
Thank you, I don't think we're gonna change the Green Community. Yeah, I I don't, and I don't want to do it.
Okay, so we're gonna pass on this one for tonight. As I said, my high advisory devotee now.
We're just. Next one is.
So, yeah, the solar, um.
Regulating solely large, also facilities, house size facilities. Again, changing areas of.
Is, um. I still plan a board voting on this? Was five to nothing? All right, any comments or questions about Amendment to Article ten point two solar energy? No. Mr. Frog, anything, Mr. Gray, no, so can I have a motion to approve, um. The Amendment to Article ten point two solar energy. So, sorry, okay, hey, I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up is Article. Eleven, Amendment to Article nine point three floodplain and watershed protection district. Again, um. My notes, this was housekeeping, because the state has a new model bylaw. Correct? So, it looks like the breadth of the, um. Bylaw is pretty much intact, there's just a few additional. There's just a few additional comments. Okay. For me, it's nothing to approve this. Any comments or questions? No, can I have a motion to? Motion to approve Article 11 by Mr. Brady? Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Plucks, seconded, all in favor? Okay, so that's through. Next is Article 12. Amendments to Article 9.1 Land Alteration. So we've been through this one, advisory approved it, eight to nothing. Um, this has a lot of additions to our existing bylaws, evidenced by the underlying text.
More than rewrite and stuff that's already in there. We talked about references to accessory classifications of land. The major change is to take away some exemptions from the, one exemption from the clearing part of the bylaw, two exemptions from the earth green and water green part of the bylaw, just to bring more, we've given the project and given our alteration of land on a property into the special permit process. It's not a prohibition. There's some sign of a planning board making a prediction, predicting anyway. It's to take away the, basically the exemptions of water green or accessory buildings. So they're just basically special permit views. Since bylaws existed, we've had, since 2018, we only had one project, uh, with a special permit.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve Article 12 amendments to Article 9.1 Land Alteration, um, by Mr. Brady. We have a second?
Second.
Any other conversation? No? All in favor? Aye, five to nothing. Okay, and it's only recent, Tom, I mentioned that it looked like a lot of addition because I've been seeing the strike where it's all out of number one, which in previous, um, indicated it's new, new text. Okay, Article 13 Implementation of a New Development Impact Mitigation Bylaw as a new zoning Article 11.
Well, we reorganized that and became.
Right, so, um, this would, um, this, this bylaw would allow us to assess developers to provide mitigation for any, um, public, um.
Impact on, on public infrastructure and certain public interest that's staying.
Yeah.
Rather than how the planning board is on, negotiate these things and rely on good faith of the bill. Negotiate this, we stress the ability and circumstances to, um, to mandate these kind of assessment and then asking to mandate certain litigation, it's not absolute in every case, it's, it's may happen, it's just putting tool on the toolbox.
I think this is about time we dealt with this. This is an issue, um, which is basically simple justice inequity, which is the development comes in to an area and causes substantial, um, changes in what's going on. The development and part of the process should have an obligation and limited manor, not one of the public owners to mitigate the impact of that. And I congratulate you, Tom, for getting this and the rest of the committee, both letting this in my strongest.
Thank you, Tom.
Make a motion?
We also had versions, we had versions from other towns that they were. We had to coacidize it.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you for this one. This is almost over two years in the making for the mitigation. And one of the important things people will know is that it's going to codify different areas, uh, that the planning board can look at. As far as mitigation, let's talk about the town infrastructure. Uh, otherwise, as we go forward in the future, where you have future planning boards and you have future, um, you know, other boards looking at this. It, it, it's then it's left to their devices as to what they're going to look at for mitigation, if any. So by codifying it, talking, protecting the town's historic resources, the environment, uh, loss of trees. These are some of the categories that are in there that, that a developer might mitigation for. So it's two years in the making and it's long overdue.
I, I might also add one of the important things is having been in the real estate industry, that also tells potential development what they have to do. So they don't go into an ultimate ending situation where it's unlimited, everything's clear in one front.
Great, all right, so I have a motion to approve Article 13 Implementation of a New Development Impact Mitigation Bylaw as the new zoning Article number 11.
I, I made the motion.
Oh, I hadn't called for it, sorry. I just called, I just called for the motion. Okay, so Mr. Grayton moved it, Mr. Uh, Brady seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Article 14 Amendments to Article 4.3 Accessory Use Regulations and Article 2 Definitions. It looks like a lot of housekeeping would have been through it, um, with Mr. Callahan prior. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Look, the only question I have is, is, I was going to ask Tom, is there a better update from the state as far as, uh, any regulations to how they're doing accessory dwelling? Because it said the housing bond bill, but it went forward, but I heard.
This is to respond to the news. No, we just amended the ADU bylaw.
Yes, we did.
Um, this is to respond to the new state law that based on. Ends up to 900 square feet as a right. We're creating a special permit to a slightly larger. The regulations aren't supposed to come out till February.
Okay.
But town council has gone over, looking at the state act. Better to have this in place now rather than wait for the spring, so it's weird.
And, and if there are changes from the state, then you just.
The regulatory changes usually won't change the text of the statute.
Okay. Okay, so, um, can I have a motion to approve Article 14 Amendments to Article 4.3 Accessory Use Regulations and Article 2 Definitions? So, I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Article 15 Amendments to Article 5.3 Table of Dimensional Regulations. Um, short and sweet, um. Any comments from anybody? No?
This is the one I'm afraid we wouldn't have talked about.
Okay. All right, so can I have a motion to approve Article 15? Okay, Mr. Brady moved it, second?
Second.
Mr. Plucks, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a new one, Article 16, which I think was just handed out to everybody that's in our packet. Amend the MBTA zoning consistently with the EO HLC feedback. So we have to amend the zoning bylaw that we just put in, um.
DHD is now, you know, HLC, whatever it is.
Yeah.
May review this bylaw, the MBTA, MBTA bylaw last winter before we went to town meeting, we said it was okay. Now, of course, the county general has approved it, it's on our books. Then that same agency came out with their groups. Um, your district, your new district also is on the side of your ownership, more the resources protection over the district. So that district, all the resources, it requires a special permit process. With the MBTA communities, everything has to be as right, we'll have a site plan review process, but not a special permit. So this is just to take away the special permit process, making an exception to the more resources district bylaw. The substance of that bylaw, what not just uses and storage and things that will still apply, we just can't follow the specific process. So if you're planning board, if you ever get one of these projects, you're planning board, that site plan review, the area of relation or resource protection district issues, just not special. That's all the stuff.
And so the planning board recommended.
We've got to have, you have to first refer, so we're having a public hearing.
Okay, so.
If you, but I would ask you to vote some.
Okay, so we have, we have two motions, one for Article and one to refer about the planning board.
It's actually to refer my complaint from.
For public hearing, okay, so can I have a motion to refer Article 16 Amendment MBTA zoning consistent with EO HLC feedback? Um, back to the planning board for a public hearing? Motion, anyone?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We, 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 we discussed this, having.
Okay, um, any questions on this in terms of, of what the changes to what we approved last year? No, okay, so can I have a motion to approve Article 16?
So moved.
Thank you, can I have a second? Second, Mr. Grayton, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's fair, okay, um. Okay. Okay, so next, um. Okay, um. So next up is a discussion and a vote on an open meeting law playing against the Elder Affairs Board regarding their executive session of October 21, 2024. On October 21, 2024, conclusion of their public meeting, um, the Elder Affairs Board went into, um, executive session. Um, it was improperly posted on their agenda as post-meeting executive session without the exemption number nor the topic to be discussed. Um, and then they went into executive session, was verbally called for indicating exemption number one, which is to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, mental health, rather than, rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual. But, so that's the exemption for number one, but at the end of the motion, it was stated to discuss the town manager's job performance. So further in compliance with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law states that the individual to be discussed in such executive session shall be notified and writing by the public body at least 48 hours prior to that executive session. However, that notification may be waived by, written, granted by both parties. The meeting law goes on to state that the session may be held in public session at the individual to be discussed, so request. The open meeting law then goes on to state the party to be discussed has rights, such as presence of counsel, the right to speak on his own behalf. Has the right to cause an independent record to be created and set an executive session at its own, his or her expense. Um, so the town manager did not receive any notification that he was going to be the subject of an executive session by the Elder Affairs Board. And, um, all the town manager's rights under the open meeting law, um, were violated. Um, and in addition, the Elder Affairs Board, Elder Affairs Board has no standing to discuss the, um, job performance of the town manager or to hold any executive such, executive session under exemption number one as it relates to the town manager. So I, um, emailed the chair of the Elder Affairs Board with this information copied in town council on Wednesday evening, or being it's Monday night, I have not received a response back. Doesn't appear that anyone here is, um, present to, to discuss it, um, open session. And, um, I want, I want to be clear, this is, this is not about the town manager, it's about process, it's a, it's about, um, what we as elected and appointed officials are obligated to do under the open meeting law. And it's a law, it's, it's not a suggestion, it's the law. And, um, I hold very dear, um, and, um, I, I feel this was quite egregious. Um, I'm still as upset about it tonight as I was a week ago. Um, and, um, I want us to talk about it, um, as a, as a board. So I'll open it up for conversation or comments.
I'll reserve my questions until the end, but I'd like to hear from the other board members first.
Uh, I would just comment that I agree with you, Alan. We are in a special position as board members in Cohasset, and we have standards that we need to adhere to when there's a discussion of an issue. There are rules about what, and what discussions can happen in executive session and how that has to be noticed and announced and, uh, and conducted. And we have to make sure everyone understands how that has to work. And we have to make sure we address it when those rules, excuse me, those laws are not followed.
Mr. Grayton?
We've heard nothing from the, uh, individual.
No, I, as indicated, I, um, you know, the chair, Mr. Heinz, on Wednesday evening after the, um, like a reopening copied in town council.
Because to me, there's things that people always have to go to, catch them flat. Those things are omnichannel and they have. You see as protected. Reached out. I pulled that off carefully myself. Did. It's just by a spot or. You name it. Reputation get hurt. Possible spread, disinformation. Potential, that's why I take place and maintain security of what's being discussed.
So town manager did not have, did not have any knowledge of this.
Do you have any feedback?
I have some questions regarding it, because it's here and it's with Tommy Andrew. Uh, Chris, when did you become aware of the Elder Affairs Board meeting on October 21st? Would go into executive session regarding you to tell me, when did you become first aware of that meeting?
This past, I think, when Chair Art called. I was actually even going on Tuesday and I had no knowledge whatsoever. I know they had a meeting, but I had no idea that that had happened.
And did you receive any communication from the Elder Affairs Board Executive? Excuse me, did you receive any communication of the Elder Affairs Board Executive Session Meeting on October 21st from the Executive Director of Elder Affairs? And if so, uh, when and what type of communication?
So I, I'm, I'm a regular receiver. It doesn't count for the executive director, the director, the agenda. Um, and there was no detail on that agenda of any kind. Given me any kind of indications.
Okay, so other than the, um, than the Elder Affairs Director, did you receive any communication from Elder Affairs Board Member, uh, regarding this executive session?
Not that I've, not that I found.
Uh, do you normally review the upcoming agendas of Cohasset boards before they occur?
If I can intervene, is this a cross-examination?
Yeah.
Uh, no, it's not.
It sounds like a cross.
I, I, I. I have a couple of questions to go on.
I do, I do, I do skimmy, I do skip.
Okay, gentlemen, 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 let's, let's, let's tone this down a little bit, okay? This is about the violation of the open meeting law.
Couple of questions to go on.
Oh, okay, but, well, I would like the tone to change a little bit. You, you are putting the town manager here, you know, on the witness stand. He's asked and answered that he had no information.
Well, I'm going, we're going to make sure this is the facts. So do you review the upcoming agendas of Cohasset boards before they occur?
Uh, from time to time, uh, generally, um, only in depth of an astrotick.
Did you review this agenda for the Elder Affairs Board meeting scheduled on October 21st at all?
No, I was given the indication that there was anything that, that I, I needed to attend.
And it's my understanding that at some point last week, when you went to the senior center, um, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, did you go to the senior center last week at some point?
Yeah, so, uh, the, uh, new director has started a new program. I can't remember the exact name. New director has started a new program, I can't remember the exact name, but the new the new kitchen coordinator, next street, so she's invited the entire town staff to come and mingle. We had about ten people from across the spectrum of town staff again on Tuesday. Back and forth for that, it was great opportunity and as it turned out, I actually ended up walking around and helping distribute cookies because they were being like, brachette, it was beautiful day. It was like mahjong, so I ended up, uh, helping distribute them. It's unplanned, but it was by, and I also had a couple of those, that's the reason I was over.
Thanks, thank you.
I got to sit outside and enjoy the day, so part of the burger was actually beautiful.
I hope they're doing good, it sounds good.
I I guess, and I gotta tell you, Jen, kitchen coordinator's been doing amazing work, she would.
The the reason I'm asking these questions is because from the fact that, okay, if you said this town manager had no knowledge of this meeting going on. On October the twenty first, and in my hands, I have minutes from the Cohasset elder affairs board meeting of September. Of which Chris Senior was there, in which they stated at the next meeting on October the twenty first, they were going to go into executive session. So, that information is simply incorrect.
Well, with respect, select member for, uh, I do not like being crossing that, but I will not be questioned about facts. The fact is that that board had no authority whatsoever to go to executive session at all, in fact, Mr. Farah, the fact that they talked about.
Of the minutes.
That this, this, Mr. Farah, respectfully, you're not Perry Mason, and I'm not going to suddenly admit something that ain't true. The fact is, that that board gave no.
You just did, you said you did not have it till last Wednesday, as you heard in September.
They behind the law, but respectfully, Mr. Farah, you're an attorney, I I I am actually shocked that you would sit here. And that you would twist the facts like this.
I did not.
I gotta tell you, David, I came in here on that Tuesday. And and I enjoy, I I love the commencement, it's great, the fact is that that board went so sideways that I was actually literally stunned. When the chair told me what had happened, in fact, I understand that you're the one who informed me that it happened because I didn't even know that it happened. They, what I will tell you is that apparently the chair asked for information and and information was given, I didn't find out this till later.
You're.
At the H R, or excuse me.
Your answer is not truthful to this board.
That is un, that is, that is outrageous, that is, you are lying about the facts.
You are lying, sir, I just proved right now that you, your statement to us was not correct.
Mr. Farah, Mr. Farah, Mr. Farah, those meetings are not posted, so I don't know if they're approved from September ninth, twenty twenty four, they're not posted. So I don't know.
When he was first aware of this meeting was in September.
Does it say, does it say executive session regarding what, regarding what?
Executive session.
Regarding.
Regarding what?
Uh, when I I reaffirmed it with someone.
No, regarding what?
Town manager.
Regarding of taking unsubstantiated accusations.
It is not unsubstantiated, he was.
I was, I was, effectively, I was at the meeting, they had no, and they were told right then and there, they had no authority. To to have such an executive session, and in fact, they went ahead and admitted anything. The fact is that, Mr. Farah, to to, I'm I'm dis, I'm I'm shocked and disappointed, I am shocked and disappointed. The fact is that I was never put on legal notice at all, the legal notice is a very formal thing, it's a notice that actually has to come, and it didn't happen. In fact, what happened, you've seen the tape, I didn't watch the tape, was incredibly disappointing, now the fact is, I'm not an authority on this. Secretary of State's office sure is, what's disappointing, Mr. Farah, is that you would sit here and distort what actually happened. And in attempt, I I gotta tell you, I am stunned, okay, I am absolutely literally stunned.
There's two things, number one is the notice, uh, and and the reason they have the notice. Uh, of it is that he has the opportunity beyond what Ellen and what Selectman Martin said. Was that he has the opportunity to say whether that should be in session or out of session, and he also has that right as well. And so, that, so I'm just saying that, uh, we don't know about the other notices if it was done ministerially. But he was certainly aware of that meeting on October twenty first, and so.
I I don't know how that could be because the minutes have not been posted, so you cannot say that he was aware of it, the minutes are not posted on the website, we don't know if they've been approved minutes or not, so.
I will say that Mr. Farah must be aware, he seems to get information under his board seems to get.
There, yeah, so, so that's not the point. The town manager, and this isn't about, Chris, this is about the open meeting law and an egregious violation, and. Um, I will echo Mr. Senior's disappointment, Mr. Farah, that, um, you're coming at. Um, this with supposed evidence that is not, um, posted or or validated, so I don't know where you got the meet, um, meeting minutes from.
I would like to ask if if he would give from his recollection, if he'd like to change his answer regarding when he first knew about this meeting.
I would like to propose that we stop cross-examining the town manager, this is not a.
Let Mr. Flex finish, let him finish.
So, we're gonna allow interrupting and you're applying Mr. Flex to interrupt. Then you better start doing your job and being impartial. Because you literally put your finger on the scale, you've tried to shut him down.
I did not try to shut him down, I was trying to ask him a question, you know, Mr. Gray, you are out of line, okay, I am not out of line, I am not out of line, it's my job to run this meeting and to convince it, and you are interrupt.
Roberts rules of order. And I've been interrupted by Mr. Flex and Mr. Grady repeatedly in the past, and you've done nothing to stop that, I'd like to stop that.
There's two issues, there's there's a notice, and if ministerially they did, they did what they did correctly. And so, what I wanted to ask was to get truthful answers as to the notice, he said he had no idea of it until Wednesday. And it is my understanding that that is not correct. And so that is simply, it's not a matter of a trap or anything like that, and he might have the wrong recollection of what happened in meetings. So I'm giving him a chance to say if he if he did not correctly like to re- respectfully, select member Farah.
I was never put on actual written notice, put on phone call notice, no one came to me and told me. That my meeting was posted, and in fact, if you look at the agenda, Selectman Farah, it simply says the words executive session. You know what our meeting notices do here, they display exactly what they're supposed to say, right? This detail, you know, why this detail, Selectmember Farah, because the law requires, as an attorney, I would think you would know that, and perhaps you do, but unfortunately you've chosen. That that you've chosen to cherry pick little pieces to somehow suggest something. The fact is, Selectmember Farah, I was at that meeting in September when the new executive director was introduced, and that was my focus, and you know what? It was a meeting that went positively and it went smoothly. And after the meeting, there was some additional conversation, I went around that room to make sure I talked to people and engaged with folks. For the October meeting, I was never put on any notice of anything, in fact. I I I was literally stunned that it happened, that is my actual truthful one hundred percent recollection of all of this. You want to twist it, you want to, you want to, you want to do that, I I can't stop you. I've claimed that I was not put on notice, if you don't choose to take that and in a modern way, twist it to whatever you want, I can't stop you, that's a reflection on you, not me.
No, it is, it is, yeah, I'm just, from from my understanding of what the information I've collected. Was that it was discussed at that meeting, that the next meeting they were going to executive session. And you said that you didn't know anything about it, and I'm saying that that is not correct. And I've given you the chance just to refresh your recollection regarding that meeting, and you're saying that everything was positive, well, it most certainly couldn't have been. Because at the end of that meeting, they said the next meeting they're going to go to executive session, so.
Regarding.
Tell me, Andrew.
Mr. Flex.
What's that, ask Mr. Farah, where you received the meeting minutes that you just quoted, if they're not posted on the website, I'm not sure where you received them from.
Where I received them?
Yes.
Uh, that will, that will say, uh, from from the board?
From the elder affairs board?
Yeah.
I I would argue that's extremely suspicious.
He has them. They're valid.
Right, he does.
They're valid.
Extremely suspicious.
But he has, they're valid, and they directly contradict what the town manager has asserted, nobody else. The lack of.
One other time, please. Mr. Flex.
I have much more to offer, thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Grayton.
As I said, he has them, there's no disputing their accuracy, and they directly contradict what the town manager has told this. Selective.
I bet you.
We just heard that, there's no denying that he purposely, I don't purposely, he deliberately misled this select board and made.
I object, round of chair, I object, I object, I I object, you do not have a, you do not have a right to smear me in public.
I have the right to speak at the.
No, you do not, this is not a star chamber, we are not in a trunk rally.
Okay, okay.
A trunk rally.
Okay, stop, stop, everybody.
I think we need to stop, I'm speaking, I was trying to finish, may I have to finish what I was saying?
If you can say something constructive, not disparaging.
I'm going to say not what you deem as constructive, I was just pointing out. That it has been clearly demonstrated right here and now. That Mr. Town Manager Senior just gave this board. Clearly, factually incorrect information, he was shown that it was incorrect, and he continues to do that. And unfortunately, some of the other select board members out of some kind of misguided loyalty are willing to say it's all right.
Okay.
To misrepresent to this board of selectmen.
Mr. Grady.
I'm puzzled by all this because. We're going by the evidence that one board member presents from a board that's being accused of meeting law violation, nobody is in. I don't have it, do you have it, Select, uh, Select Board Member Grayton, uh, do you have it, Mr. Flex, do you have it, Alan?
No, I do not.
Well, maybe me.
So one person that has a bias, that has doubted the Select.
I do not have a bias, sir.
Person that wrote.
I do not have a bias.
Alright, is there, and so, but that one person has the evidence against the town manager.
Because I did my homework, Mr. Gray, that's why.
You've done a lot of it, so you're the only one, so why would not, if they're being accused or brought up, not a disappointing question. If they're being brought up, an open meeting law violation, why would they not be here, why would they not present this to this board? Why would they not present it to this, to the town manager or anybody else except for you? That's you, what makes you special, Select Board Member? What does, why aren't they here, why aren't they addressing this issue, they used you as a cross-examining judge, jury, and executioner.
Your, 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 your statement is out of order, Mr. Gray, your statement is out of order.
Oh, it's not.
Let me tell you something.
And I.
Stop, stop.
Regarding natural violation, um, I would ask that, I would, if if there is a violation, I would ask that town council. Be brought in for the board to get training regarding how to properly post any articles going into executive session. And anything further regarding the open meeting by law to rectify it, if there's a problem, as this was brought up, it should be looked at. It should be resolved and then move forward.
Okay.
I merely ask the question because the facts that you established were in were in contradiction to what my understanding was of. And I don't mean to put Mr. Senior on the spot, which I did, I have great respect for the town manager's office, and I have great respect for him for the work he's done here for the last ten years. And I worked with him on many issues, but one of the things is, is that. If you're going to have facts and you're going to give them to the Attorney General regarding this. And the record has to be correct on it, and from what the record was, that my understanding was, was different from what his interpretation was, that's all.
So, to the, to that point, I.
Where is the elder affairs committee, where's their representation, so I select more members, out of line or not, where are they to have? Where are they present their, be a couple, where are they to present these minutes?
Invite them to the next meeting.
They were invited to this one.
So, I I would just like to say, number one is, the supposed evidence of meeting minutes of September ninth, which have not been posted. And, so, four of us have not seen, well, everyone in this room except for one has not seen these meeting minutes. To have the expectation from September ninth to October twenty first, that at the end of the meeting, um. Executive session at our next meeting constitutes notice under the law is false, okay, that doesn't constitute notice, okay? Mister, uh, if you're going to talk about executive session, exemption number one, it has to be played stated clearly, and even if it was. Even if it was, to discuss the town manager's job performance or anyone's job performance is not, does not fall under the exemption. So that's the violation, Mr. Heinz had plenty of time to respond to me and say, here, here's our minutes from the ninth where we told Mr. Senior. We were going to be talking about him in an executive session, and I think if they had said that to Mr. Senior, he would have said, that's not. Legal under the law, okay, um, the amount of meetings that we all go to in any given amount of time and the amount of data we process on a daily basis. Okay, uh, it's unreasonable to think that that would be remembered. And as a closing comment at a meeting on the ninth. Excuse me?
Excuse me, I I was struggling a little bit, but I should not have been.
Okay, and this, this isn't about Mr. Senior and the elder affairs board, it happens to be the circumstance. This is about every appointed or elected town board or committee. Following the law and doing what is right and fulfilling the oath that you take when you become. A member of a board and reviewing the handbook that you get from the towns and what you can and cannot do. Because what's to prevent capital budget from having executive session about the D P W director? Or us having executive session about the school superintendent, we have no purview. The elder affairs board in their charge has no purview whatsoever to discuss the town manager's job performance in executive session. Just as we have no purview to discuss the school superintendent's performance in executive session, that's the point. This does not bring me pleasure to do this, this did not bring me pleasure to write the email. Mr. Gray, if you can't keep a straight face and take this seriously, I would invite you to, no, you were smirking, you were smirking, you were laughing before and you were smirking, so.
We now have a code of conduct, it has our facial expressions or.
Your sarcasm is welcome, your sarcasm is not welcome.
I was just asking if that's a new standing.
I'm asking you to ask, act professionally, unrespectfully, no, you are not, no, you're not, um, your your tone, your your words full of insinuation. It's not appreciated, it's not productive, um, and, um. This did not, I did not want to do this, but I felt compelled to because it sets a precedent, it allows. Everybody else, and if someone from the elder affairs board had come. I'm sure they saw the posting, then. Why aren't they here, and perhaps a simple apology would make this all go away. I, so, um.
Could I ask you a question about you, 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 on how important the open meeting law? Um, and part of the open meeting law is, you know, we can't talk to one member, we talk to another, we talk to another in a circular manner. Um. We could start asking some questions and, you know, about how that has worked out. Select board members talking amongst themselves and things ending up on the agenda, but that gets a little hard to do that, but I don't. Think that we really want to go in to nitpicking and political battles, and you know, it is, it's been very clear that this board has been really, um. Less than sympathetic to concerns of the, um. You know. The senior center executive board, and there has been a lot of controversy, and this really does smack of just blatant retaliation against. The seniors because they did something that members of this board didn't like, the town manager didn't like, so now we have something. Where we can really play gotcha, and I don't think that the citizens of Cohasset. Deserve government of gotcha and retaliation and nitpicking on on this, and so I just think that we're better than that. And I think we should pack.
If I could follow that.
I was talking to the board, Mr. Senior.
If I could follow that, if.
Yes, Mr. Flex.
And Mr. Farah could follow Mr. Grayton's advice. To rise above the gotcha, the nitpicking, I think we could get a lot more done for this tenant, because what I've heard. Is a lot of gotcha and nitpicking, and Mr. Farah just provided a perfect example. Saying that he wasn't cross-examining. And his line of question was clearly related to a piece of paper that he had sitting in front of him, that he used as a gotcha nitpick. Which prevents us from doing good things for this town.
No, what he was doing was actually holding the words of the town manager and giving him the opportunity to. Repeat those words, and then he had the proof that what the town manager would say was not correct. That's what he was doing, and that is the proper role of a select board member.
Mr. Grayton.
Words that were supplied solely to Mr. Farah from the elder affairs committee. Uh, and secondly, again, Mr. Grayton is. Uh, and secondly, again, Mr. Grayton, the chair was speaking of violation of open meeting law, no one against the elder affairs committee, it's a violation of open meeting law. Sitting in executive session, we'd like this board, as she explained, discussing the merits, the competency, and the wherewithal of our school superintendent, it's not our purview, or for them to sit down and discuss DPW, or the file, or anything like that, and the confidence of people that operated that, not in their purview, nor is it in the elder affairs committee's purview to be discussing the town manager, if anybody discusses the town manager, it is the select board. As the school committee discusses and chooses the superintendent, that's what it's all about, and again, where is the elder affairs committee tonight to represent themselves? They have it at the end of the table, the person with a single piece of paper with the evidence that is to back up my colleague, I've got your molding, you're staring at a piece of paper supplied by somebody else, if the rest of the board had had it, if the town manager had it, if the assistant town manager presented that page, the people at this table would be something to go on, instead, one person comes with it in their back pocket or their little folder, and they whip it out, and that was a cross-examination of Titanic proportions, it was designed as such by unaware.
And a cross-examination, you get to the truth that we were just given.
The truth supplied by Mr. Grayton on that.
And may I, and furthermore, I might add that it's serving within the review of the executive board of the senior center to discuss actions that are directly, um, adverse to their interests, um, and this discussion, a lot of it had to do, I don't know what they talked about, but the concern of the just seniors in general is they were frozen out of the selection process of the director of their own senior center. So, I would say that, of course, the directors are going to be discussing the town manager because his actions have directly impacted their senior center, so this is just, this is just ridiculous.
In executive session, discussing the merits and the competency of the town manager.
It's not.
Well.
Mr. Flex.
Madam Chair, I, I confess, I don't know specifically the appropriate Robert's Rules of Order way to do this, but I would suggest we move on to our next agenda item, as we are starting to spiral unproductive.
Yes, so, um, we did have a vote on this, um, to, um, vote if we're going to, as a board, file an open meeting law complaint, um, on executive session. Um, if they would like to respond, we have thirty days from the date of the infraction, which was October twenty first, so it doesn't have to be done immediately, yes?
I apologize.
Okay, go ahead.
What I would suggest, Ellen, is, I think it would be constructive, and I think we would all like these conversations to be more constructive. If the elder affairs board could provide us with an explanation prior to the select board making a decision about formally filing.
Okay, I would be happy to reach out to them. Okay, so, I will reach out again to Mr. Hines, he had an opportunity last Wednesday, but I will reach out again, and I will.
Give him one more shot.
To reach out, um.
I would also ask at the conclusion, or we can talk about it with them if they come forward. Um, if there's any training for this board or any others that's needed regarding the open meeting law, that maybe that should be looked into, because I know a packet is given out regarding the basics of the open meeting law to all board members when they become board members, uh, but that doesn't include training. So, maybe that could be established.
Sure.
And I think that. There's so much good we could be doing for this town, but since you've come up with this, this board has been dragged down, and then you tell in detail. So much good that we got done last year and the year before, and it's far away.
That is your opinion.
It's my note, it's not my opinion, it's what I know.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna, I'm going to follow Mr. Flex's suggestion, we're gonna move on on the agenda, I will reach out to Mr. Haines, um, to invite, um, him before their board come, or, um, in a smaller session. Mr. Senior.
Yeah, that's, sorry, are you ready to?
Yes, we're ready to move on.
So, what I, what I, what I'd like to do is pivot to a really amazing afternoon last Wednesday, and, um, I, I, Michelle's sitting next to me, um, she proposed is, is an incredible credit for guiding the beachwood playground project, basketball. Really, really well done.
Thank you.
An example of what happens when folks collaborate and work together, uh, when they work for the benefit of the community, uh, and it was really a community effort, it was, the residents, it was engagement, the CPC, and both committees, the select board took a leading role, uh, and, uh, it really was, it was a great day, and it was even more fun, and, and what really all the effort was the kids. Kids had an amazing time, they started amazing. Uh, Michelle noted that our contractors came, we recognize this, they said it was one of the, was one of the most impressive displays they've ever seen of community engagements, and they do a lot of jobs. Uh, I think that's, that's part of the team that worked on that, and community engagement that went in on that, and to echo, um, Brady has said, when people were collaborating together, lots of great stuff was getting done, and this is just one of many great things that happened. And again, the basketball tournament was great too, Michelle got her, the refs, uh, refs reps on, and, you know, Mike Loops, that the police were also an amazing part of that. Their, their, their officers come, and even the wife and mother, they were just kind of joining in the fun. It was really a great day, and I, and I want to thank everybody who made that possible, particularly the mutual community, for all the engagement, and that, because it really was, uh, it was, it was kind of great, it was somehow great.
I'd like to shout out to Mr. Flex, who was our liaison and our select board project manager on all of our recommendations. Thank you, my friend, thank you, Darren Sharick.
And I might add that I've been on this select board for six years, and where I first came on, there was abundantly evidence of each wood playground needed to be done, and it has been a long slog, there's been political, and Michelle, I see you're looking at me with painful remembrances of all we had to go through, and, um, it was so wonderful to see that, and then see it unbanked and on the other side, by rebuilding Brown's store, which is, you know, Browns don't got it, you don't need it, um, so it's just wonderful to have Beachwood fully functioning, fully respected as part of the cohesive community, and Michelle bear the scars of the long five, six years of the battle, thank you.
Chair, anything else? Okay, so.
A funny comment, Beachwood Ballpark as well, um, give us kudos to everybody, town, uh, town manager, assistant town manager, everyone else who's part of the project. Uh, knowing it was the execution, great, on the actual construction, but the execution of the event for the opening was even better, uh, and then again, it was a testament of not only citizens, but also the different town boards coming together, including CPC, as well as the, this is the select board of the town offices, thank you.
From my, my, I, I, I'm looking right across, and I have to thank Kevin Perry for all the work he did on this too, thank you, Kevin, including doing a great job of supporting. So, uh, that was his afterthought, but he said everything, took it all down, he got all the flyers done, and he's made a couple of beautiful posters that are, that are on display, so thank you, Kevin, for.
Okay, on select board comments, Mr. Flex.
Nothing to add tonight, thank you, Chair.
Mr. Grayton.
Yeah. Roads and sidewalks, school stabilization, beachwood playground, tennis courts. All those things are coming to fruition, that come from a board and boards and the town, and town staff, people that are dedicated to making this town what it could and can and is. But, uh, and that's working, that's working, that's hustling down those meetings, uh, and getting it done. Believe me, this town was, couldn't keep one, must see a board like this yelling at each other and, and doing things like that across the table, uh, it's sad, we had a board last year that were handy gloves with our town, Michelle, Chris, the other boards, five screen capital, working as a team, and you got it done, and I'm gonna say if I'm on the board for six more months, three more years, I can rest my world on that, I'm proud of it. I do not want to be part of that disunited, discombobulated, and is no benefit to the town of Cohasset, say that, this board could work marbles, again, sad, you've got some things to get over the hurdle, you've got big pictures to work on, and it does, sadly, that, uh, night like this has come to pass.
Mr. Grayton.
You know, um, it wasn't quite as wonderful as Mr. Grayton seems to think, but, but I do think that I did get, um, a letter that was sent, um, to the select board on Monday, ten twenty eight, from the, um, senior center board. The response to requests for comments by the BOs regarding town manager bid contract review, now this was in the possession of every member of this select board, including town manager, and suddenly they said they didn't hear anything, so maybe I'm the only one who got it. Okay, this is, um, was voted, and it was sent by Richard Hines, I am going to read this in my comment period, please do not try to censor and shut me up. Uh, unfortunately, interactions between the city and.
I, I, especially Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
The town manager.
Wait, Mr. Grayton, one moment, please.
It is this interesting, listening to the opinions of us, it says, let's, this is come out of the executive session, this is another. Mr. Senior makes it a certain efficiency as a bureaucrat, but the abilities to actively listen, empathize, and elaborate seem to allude leadership qualities which are the very foundation of creating a true community spirit, in which good people are eager to participate. For its opinion, that the town manager is not effectively working with us and serving the needs of the senior population of Cohasset, demographic that comprises forty percent of the eligible voters in this town, and I might add that to shut up the, uh, a letter from the senior board is another example of the way this board and this town manager have egregiously treated the senior citizens of this town as second citizens, they've attacked their, their senior center, um, and now, when I tried to read the letter that was sent to the town manager, and each and every member of the select board.
I don't, the town manager was copied on that.
Well, I'm sorry, it's on, it's on here, but it should have been, and then you try to shut it down, but you don't want to listen to them, and then you're trying to say that a select board member in his comment period cannot read it, and our, and our town manager has fled the room, thank you.
Mr. Farag.
As I said before, uh, Beachwood Ballpark is a great thing that happened, and there'll be many other projects coming up that are currently working on the tennis courts, hopefully be done by the spring. Um, I look forward to working with the board, uh, as much as possible, um, excuse me, are you gonna monitor on your breath when I make a comment?
No, I said, sure, I was talking to someone else.
You gonna be sarcastic?
Okay, enough, gentlemen, enough, enough.
I, I, I listened to your comments very nicely, I would just listen a lot, thank you so much.
Enough, enough, well, thank you, Mr. Grayton.
So, I'm working with the board, but one of the things that has to happen is, is we have to have the facts, and we have to get the information in order to make proper decisions regarding this board. And that, and in order to do what is best for the town of Cohasset, and for coming on this board, that's what I've always done, whether it was the town leases, whether it's with HR, whether it was with anything else, was to get the proper information, put it on the agenda, and then make sure that we have good government going forward, and I know the rest of the board members feel the same, some might feel that it's minutia, but it certainly isn't, they're important items, along with everything else that goes on our agenda, so I look forward to working with the board and going forward, and then we'll get through all the issues that happen, that are currently in front of Cohasset, so thank you so much.
Yeah, I have to, um, just a few comments, um, as we know, Halloween is Thursday, and we'll have a lot of trick or treaters going around town, and I'm all bringing this up because as I was driving along one twenty eight in Canton this morning at six AM, I thought it was fog, it was smoke, I thought my car was overheating, it was the smell of the smoke from the wildfires, so I'd just like to encourage everybody, because jack-o'-lanterns out, to be extra careful, we've had a particularly dry spell, um, and, um, we don't want, we don't want anything to happen on what is supposed to be a fun night for all of our little kids. The other thing I would like to bring to the board's attention, Pam Feige, our health agent, sent me, um, a memo from the, um, sorry, from the Community Equity Health Needs Assessment Group to assess the health needs and areas for potential collaboration with the South Shore. They're looking for any stakeholders who would like to complete a survey, a fifteen minute survey, and then follow up with one hour interview, just to talk about um, general perceptions of, um, health in our community, anyone who's interested, I would be happy to send a link to you. Follow the email that has the link and the interview, scheduling of the interview is at your convenience, um, and, um, it has to be completed by November nineteenth, so if anyone would like to participate, please let me know, and I'll forward that by tomorrow, um. Regarding tonight's meeting, and the, the unpleasant topic that we had to discuss, and the discourse that happened afterwards, I expect better from all of us, um, and in terms of professional courtesy, listening, um, stating facts, eliminating insinuation, uh, sarcasm on such a topic that's serious, uh, or laughter, um, we should be better than that, and we, as the select board, should hold ourselves to higher standards, and continue to do the good work that we have been doing, this is a distraction, it's not pleasant, it's not, um, anything that I wanted to do, I felt compelled to do it, um, I believe I did give Mr. Hines an opportunity to respond, he did not respond, I will reach out to him again. I would like to ask all of us to be respectful of each other and allow um, each other to speak, to limit any personal comments, um, and let's stick to the facts and the business of the town, that's why we revoked it, um, to be on this board, um, I'm disappointed in myself that I let that section of this meeting get out of hand, um, I can only bang the gavel so much, which I don't like to do, and, um, we need to present, um, we can have differences of opinion, but we should never make it personal against us or anybody who works for the town, um. And I will be thinking about this, if anyone has any concerns about any open meeting law violations, um, that may or may not have occurred, um, please bring it up, let's not insinuate about it, please bring it up, and let's talk about it, so, um, that's all I have to say, we have approval of the minutes for October fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion? Mr. Grayton moved, can I have a second? Mr. Flex, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we have executive session exemption number three, Michelle, do you know if we have any update on the CDM? No, Tracy's nodding her head, so we do not need to go into executive session for exemption number three, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn at nine twenty eight PM. Mr. Grayton moved to second, Mr. Flex, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.